Meeting of the Lake Ridge Village Council, order. Please rise for the petition.
By the majesty's and the divine, the United States of America, and to the Republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, roll call please.
President Van Porple.
Here.
President Proten Matheson.
Here.
Councilmember Churchill.
Here.
Councilmember Hammond.
Here.
Councilmember Hobbs. Councilmember Randville.
Here.
Councilmember Rupp.
Here.
President Van Porple, we have a quorum and we had prior notice from Councilmember Hobbs that he would be unable to attend and requested to be excused.
Thank you, thank you very much. Item four, call in public, anybody wish to address it? Council on non-agenda item. We'll close calls to the public. Item five, consent agenda.
Move to approve the consent agenda.
Support.
We have ten items on our consent agenda this evening. Item one, Board of Zoning Appeals appointment. Ms. Mary Chika Crawford, she's with us this evening. She's looking to take one of the places on our VZA board and we thank her. Item two, authorization to sell the 2013 Ford Police Interceptor Sedan. Item three, approval of village council regular meeting minutes for February 25th. Item four, Parks and Recreation Advisory Committee regular meeting draft minutes February 26th. Item five, Planning Commission regular meeting draft minutes February 4th. Item six, Public Works Director monthly report. Item seven, LOPD January reports. Item eight, LOPD February reports. Item nine, receive and file McKenna Planning monthly report from February. And item 10, Fire Department Run Report. We have a motion, support. All those in favor indicate with aye. Aye, opposed. Item six, approval of the agenda. No new items or additions at this point.
Move to approve tonight's agenda.
Support.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed. Item seven, presentations. The presentation we're going to set aside momentarily, our presenter is on their way here and we'll look to come back to that shortly. Item eight, public hearings. Item one, public hearing ordinance number 22.05 fireworks, Mr. Young.
Yes, council, we have before you ordinance amendment to comply with a new state law that limits the two-five, the number of events, holiday events, that fireworks can be displayed and there's a cutoff time, I believe, 11 o'clock as well. So this is a public hearing and later on in the agenda we're going to have a second reading and adoption for your consideration.
I'll open the public hearing at this time. Close the public hearing and we'll set it aside for an agenda item later on. Moving on. To item nine, agenda items for consideration. Item eight, financial matters. Number one, invoice register and bill approval, Mr. Young.
Yes, council, before you, we have bills that were paid February 26th and March 5th in the amount of fourteen thousand, seven hundred, I'm sorry, fourteen thousand, two-hundred-and-nineteen dollars and fifty-five cents and an invoice register dated March 8th in the amount of one-hundred-and-twenty-seven-thousand, seventy-eight dollars and ninety-six cents. I have the bills here, if you have any questions on any item.
Move to approve the bills paid February 26th and March 5th, 2019, in the amount of fourteen thousand, two-hundred-and-nineteen dollars and fifty-five cents and to approve payment of the March 8th, 2019 invoice register report in the amount of one-hundred-and-twenty-seven-thousand, seventy-eight dollars and ninety-six cents.
Second floor.
Supported by Mr. Randville. Questions, challenges, clarifications? All those in favor, please do, oh, roll call, thank you.
Rupp?
Yes.
Van Porple?
Yes.
Churchill?
Yes.
Hammond?
Yes.
Randville?
Yes.
Matheson?
Yes.
Motion carries six-zero.
Thank you. Item two, budget, financial report, Mr. Young.
Yes, council, we have the February budget and report and financial report balance sheet for you, as of February. Everything's being monitored and we got some budget amendments coming up next on the agenda. If there's any particular questions on it, we can answer. At this time, there's nothing of significance other than those budget adjustments, which is next on the agenda.
Votes to receive and file?
Yes.
Support.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Moving on, item three, budget amendments, Mr. Young.
Yes, council, we have four budget amendments for you this evening. One is general fund, we got two entries. One was for our website contract of nineteen-hundred-and-eighty-three dollars. Just putting in a proper account, it's a website from a administrative, a maintenance account. And I have adjustments in the administrative, other general services, wages, part-time and treasurer, where the original budget called for a full-time treasurer and deputy and then office coordinator. This is adjusting for what we actually ended up hiring five part-time, there's now five part-time people, no full-time people. The treasurer and deputy treasurer and payable person are being paid out of the treasurer fund and the two account coordinators are being paid out of the administrative services. This is adjusting the budget to reflect what the actual employment and staffing is at this time. It's a net zero difference, it's just between two activities. And then we have local street and major street, major street and local street adjustments and that's based on activity to date and surface maintenance, traffic maintenance and snow and ice. As you know, we've had a rough winter and we're adjusting accordingly. Fortunately, we do have additional funds from the state to help with that offset. Both of these funds are in positive fund balance, but these are adjustments, one's twenty-eight thousand for the major street between accounts and then nineteen thousand, nine hundred for the local street in the various accounts listed. So those are the four budget amendments for your consideration this evening.
Move to approve the budget amendments as presented.
Support.
Discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Thank you, sir. Item B, other items, shared parking agreement, 45 East Flint, Mr. Young?
Yes, council, this is a shared parking agreement that was negotiated with JS Capital, who owns what was the former pet center site, which now has been a parking lot and this agreement provides that for the one-year period of time, that he would allow us to be using that for public parking, to the extent that the spaces are available. As you know, he's throwing some of his building material on there, but there's a potential of up to forty spaces, there's about thirty of them or so being used at this time. The provision is that the village would pay, the DDA would be paying, I'm sorry, the amount of property taxes on the property, which is the same arrangement we had with the pet center previously and amounts to three-thousand-two-hundred-and-twenty-seven dollars for the year. So it's here for your approval. The DDA already has approved it and authorized it, subject to village council approval of the agreement. Again, it's a one-year contract, subject to what his development plans might be.
When will that one-year going affect? When that parking lot's fully available?
Well, technically, it could, it would be from the date of the execution of this agreement. So it'd be a year from now.
You're, you're losing how many spots right now?
Because of the construction?
How much longer?
There's about maybe ten to twelve spaces.
One more weather's upon us.
Now, the thing, keep in mind, we've been using that lot without this arrangement and no charge. So this is from this point forward.
And that should be gone by probably end of April, May? All the block?
Oh, yeah, yeah, he's got a crew there, just today, started laying those blocks, yes. Should be done shortly.
I entertain a motion.
I move to approve the shared parking lot agreement with JS Capital Equities LLC and authorize the village council president to sign the agreement, subject to review by the village attorney.
Support.
Additional discussion? Would you like roll call?
Randville?
Yes.
Rupp?
Yes.
Van Porple?
Yes.
Hammond?
Yes.
Churchill?
Yes.
Matheson?
Yes.
Motion carries six-zero.
I want to thank JS Capital because I think it's a good arrangement for our community.
Very good.
So thank you. Item two, turkey trot Thanksgiving event, Mr. Young.
Yes, council, before you, brought back again the event application from Aaron Palion? Did I say that? Allen?
Palion.
Palion, Palion, I'm sorry, Aaron, who's proposing to bring in on Thanksgiving Day a turkey trot event that has a number of components for runners and families of all types and interests and let him come up and speak for a few minutes and promote his event.
Thank you for consideration on this and so, current status of it outside of the village is I've gotten approvals from the trail commission, from Orient Township, and now I'm talking to you guys. So I've talked to the police department here, they're on board, you know, obviously it falls on you guys to the final vote on that, but this is the last piece of the puzzle here, the vote tonight. But this would be Thanksgiving morning, it would start early, be done relatively early, cleared out before noon, but a majority of the event would take place from 7:30 to about 9:30 or so, 9, 9:30, most people would be finished or even before then. There's a kids' K component and potentially a beer mile that's very limited on the registrations for that, just kind of a fun accent to everything, but the majority of people would be in the 5K, 10K. I know events here in the past have had two, three, four hundred people and been considered successful and pretty large. I'm looking at trying to bring in anywhere from 500 to 1,500. I think that where it lends itself very well to bringing in more people and, and a lot of those still being in the area, not bringing in all of them from outside of Lake Orient would be that every turkey trot I've ever been involved with, and a little background on myself, I've been doing this now going on 12 years. I used to work for General Motors in advertising, moved to Texas when I lost my job and stayed down there for about a decade. I was an art teacher, started into this because I was also an athlete and then we moved back up here about a year ago, my wife and my family and I, so we're glad to be back, but I have a lot of experience, I've put on over a hundred events. We, down in Houston, we had over thirty thousand people a year that came to our events. So what I've really realized with holiday events more than anything is that you don't have to be a runner, you don't have to be in shape, you don't really have to be anything. It's more of a tradition, it's something to do and especially on Thanksgiving, people have this mindset like, well, I'm about to take in like 10,000 calories, so I think if I go walk or run three miles, that'll definitely get rid of those calories, so, and it's a tradition, people bring out their family, their friends, and so they like to do it every year. What we ran into with a lot of other events that weren't holiday-based is that the first year, we had a half marathon, for instance, the first year had 2,500, 3,000 people and that was great, but over the next three years it declined all down to under 1,000. And what happens is the hype goes away and they find other things to do, they get bored, but with events that are centered around holidays, they don't really, they tend to stay put, they tend to want to keep doing that tradition. So that's why I think this would be really good for the community, just the whole family side of it. So the 5K and 10K would, as of now, start at the same time. It may get to a point when it, when and if it gets to 1,000 or more people that just reevaluate and maybe start the 10K 30 minutes later to make it a little less congested, but the goal now would be to start them at the same time. They'd run north on Broadway to Cedar, come down Washington and then go down onto the Paint Creek Trail and they would go almost down to where the archers are, the archery, they'd turn around and come back and then on the way back up they would just go through, use the trail to go through a little section of the park behind the lumberyard there and then they would come right up South Anderson and they would finish right where the parking lot is next to Hanson's. So I've got permission to use that parking lot from the private owner of that. The police chief told me that they would mention it to the fire department. We would obviously, South Anderson would be closed, but it would be obviously open to emergencies, the fire department coming in and out of there. We would close this section of road on Broadway where the start chute would be, it's just one block and the police chief said that they usually use that area and people are used to that being shut down, that small section. But the good thing is, once the race starts at 7:30, everybody can complete the first mile concerning the roads in Lake Orient, they will be done and out of there, even if they walked it, they'd be done before 8 o'clock and after that it's all trails or sidewalks, whatever you want to call it. So the city for the most part, or the village for the most part, is open back up. The only thing where it would be closed a little bit again would be for the kids' run, which I'm estimating if we get 1,000 or more people, the kids will probably be 100 to 200 kids for that race. It would start in the same spot and it would just do a quick run around the block north of Lockarts there and it would come back down and just right to the finish line. So that'd be really brief, usually that's over in snap, you know, so that's what we're looking at. I'm working closely with Drew, the owner of Lockarts, he's really interested and will probably make a deal where they cater the whole thing, so really good food and things of that nature, so. Any questions on anything?
Mr. Young?
I would just want to make note that we do have a $1,000 deposit received to cover the police and DPW charges and any cleanup or any other issues that may come up, so we have that money on deposit now for the event.
And we, I know that it'll, there's extra costs that will be incurred for the police and then also the county police are going to be down on the trail, down by Kern, to make sure that as the runners cross, there really probably, there shouldn't be anything there on Thanksgiving morning, any cars really, but you never know, so I've already got approval for that as well, so.
We, we've got like 40 events that go on in our community right now. You're the first larger-scale, private, for-profit that I'm aware of and we appreciate your event because it's something that we have some path experience with, that we've done ourselves, like our New Year's run and so on and so forth. And it's a good event to learn with and we appreciate your application. I appreciate you coming forward because we're developing some of the rules, we're looking to create a better platform to manage these events. You willingly handed in your $1,000 deposit check for reimbursement of services that may occur and thank you for that. Looks like a nice event. I like the idea that you're staying open-minded about the beer mile, I'm not sure how that's going to work, but administrative staff and you and our DDA, I'm sure you're going to converse more about this and, and kind of figure it out.
So just to elaborate, just a second on that, I, I'd prefer to keep it, and I say first year, but probably every year, just low on registration for that, somewhere between 25 to 50 people. It basically, what it would be is a lap and it's on the maps, but a short lap where it's not around houses, you know, people aren't drinking, open in the street or anything. And if we, if we had to, we could put up a tent where they go into that and they start and then every lap they drink a beer and they finish, they don't drink one there. And obviously, part of the requirement there would be that not only do they, when they sign up, they have to list who their designated driver is, but when they show, they have to show a license to show they're old enough again when they show up and then they also have to check in their designated driver there. So, I mean, I think that's about as far as we could go, I'm open to other things, but we definitely want to make sure people aren't slamming four beers and getting in a car, you know?
Yeah.
But it's more fun to try, try and watch them make it to the end without losing it, so.
Yeah, so, and you're partnered with a well-known, highly respected business here in our community, Lockarts. I thank you for that.
What's funny about that is being, being down in Texas for 10 years, we actually have gone to the, the city Lockarts or town and when we went in there for the first time, like I think a month and a half ago, we're like, oh my God, this is the best barbecue we've ever had and so it's just kind of funny that it came from Texas, it seems like it was meant to be.
Yeah, yeah, right, right. So I just have comments is all and hopefully things are going well for you and your application process. Mr. Young?
You're, Aaron, you're, you're also looking at a possible other event, right?
Yes, so the other event that is a little more early in the planning stages, I have not reached out to the, to the township and the trail yet, but it would be called the Lake Orient Challenge and essentially what it would be is they start at the DNR ramp or dock at the far north part of the lake and it's a paddle, so you could do a kayak or a canoe, possibly even a stand-up paddleboard, they would be required to wear life jackets and then they paddle a mile and they get out over at Greens Park and then they get on their bike over by the trail, we'd have a transition area where they can, it's a mountain bike and they would go down and back on the trail, so it'd be 10 miles total, five down, five back, and then they would run in North Lake Orient, kind of the same area that we're running the turkey trot in, but it would be two one-mile loops for a two-mile run and they would finish on the back parking lot of Lockarts there. So a paddle, a bike and a run, so kind of like a triathlon. And when I was over at DDA, they were mentioning, oh, we'd love to have a triathlon, but that's kind of been my bread and butter for a decade and this isn't, unless this area was completely willing to stop all traffic, it's not really going to fit with a triathlon being on the road and everything. So I think that's kind of a unique thing and with a triathlon, usually there's a lot of training required, there's huge amount of spending, you have to do a road bike by comparison to going to like Walmart and buying a, a mountain bike for 75 bucks, a road bike entry level is like 500. So I think doing something like this, it opens it up to pretty much anyone that wants to do it. Most people have a kayak or they can borrow one around here with all the lakes and then you can, everyone's got some type of bike they could ride on that trail and then anyone can run, walk two one-mile loops, so I think you get in everybody, not just athletes.
You're looking at the first weekend in, in October?
So that would be October 5th or 6th, it could be Saturday or Sunday, whatever works better and then obviously Thanksgiving Day.
I've been a opponent of a triathlon here in our community for around about 14 years now, so it's good to hear.
Yeah, I mean, I'd love to do a regular one, the only thing is like, I mean, the roads, it would just, and, and I mean, we've shut down highways before, but those I think would actually be easier than trying to shut down the pier and everything around here with all the congestion, but I'm certainly open to that as well, but I think this would be a better, better fit, at least initially.
So question, one question, for the turkey trot, what, do you have an estimated entry fee for that yet?
Yeah, so the, the 5K would start out at $25 and the 10K would be 35. I had it a little lower, but some of my expenses kicked up, so I had to raise it up five bucks. And then the kids, I think I have starting at 15 and the beer mile would start at 18. Now each of those would go up about $5 four times because that helps drive registration if they know they can save by registering early. Plus, if they register early, there's a lot of things like medals and shirts and bibs and all this kind of stuff, the race numbers, that I have to order very early, so if they register late, they get charged more, but that's to help alleviate some of the waste and extra costs that I have, so that's how. I think they end at 40 for the 5K, 50 for the 10K and like 25 for the kids' K, but I think the average is like 30 to 35 bucks throughout the whole.
Thanks, yeah, I feel like that's very reasonable, some races I've run and things I just dropped $60 on a race for down in Detroit next month, so, yeah.
Well, and a lot of people have said, we always go to Detroit to do the turkey trot down there and so now they've, they've commented, oh my gosh, it'd be so great to just stay here.
I never go to Detroit with the turkey trotts, I'm excited about something here. And then I'm, I'm intrigued and excited about the idea of the not triathlon but multi-sport thing, I've done a few triathlons and my first one was actually on a like $75 Walmart bike and didn't know how to swim at the time and it was horrible. So I, I would be excited about something where I could kayak and not swim.
And that one would be limited to probably between 250 and 350 people because getting that many people on the lake and then bikes on that trail, if you had 1,000 bikes on that trail, you'd be in trouble, so.
Yeah, you'd have to segment it, yeah.
And you're having, starting corrals for the turkey trot, I'm assuming?
Uh, depends on the, like, I might separate them by a half hour and then if it's even at 1,500, I might go male, female starts or, I, I don't know quite yet, I kind of want to see. And I'll, I'll put something on the website before April 6th, when I'm planning on opening registration, that says start times may be adjusted by a half hour if we have, you know, a lot of people.
I'd encourage you to come back down, as well as plan the website, you've got the opportunity in our public comment to do another brief announcement?
Okay.
To help get it out there in the public?
Yeah.
Always give us information, we'll make sure we talk about it here too at the council level.
That'd be great, yeah.
Good. I don't think we have a motion on the floor at this point or a support.
I move to approve the turkey trot event for November 28th, 2019, with police and DPW event costs reimbursed by the event, off-site shuttle parking provided and subject to the application and insurance documents being completed.
Support.
Further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Vote is passed, welcome, sir, thank you. Okay, council, we're going to, I see Mr. Meisner has joined us, welcome, sir, good evening.
Thank you.
Good evening.
And we're going to move back to... And we're going to move back to a presentation, and we're thankful you could be here this evening, sir, and please, go ahead.
Well, thank you. Thank you very much, and to the distinguished members, I appreciate your leadership and staff and good folks of Lake Orion. I'm Andy Meisner, I'm the county treasurer. And I, I came here tonight with one particularly important message, and that I seek your assistance in getting the word out to our mutual constituents, and that is about the property tax foreclosure deadline that is this April 1st. And so I, I think this is a little understood process, but you know, the way it works is you guys send out the summer and winter tax bills, and then if the payment is not made to the township by March 1st of the following year, the taxes come over to the county treasurer's office. That starts a 28-month process that involves interest and fees, us reaching out and, and trying to engage the taxpayer, you know, get them on a payment plan, figure out what's going on, and try to solve it together. But after April 1st, after that deadline, the treasurer loses any discretion to withhold the property from foreclosure. And so that's why I wanted to come here personally, just to urge your partnership. You guys as local elected officials, you have relationships with people in a different way than I do, because you're here all the time. And so my bet is, is that you probably in your mind could think about folks that you might know who could be in a precarious financial state, and what I'm asking you to do is just go ahead and reach out. I'm doing a number of home visits throughout the township and across the county, but we're friendly. I don't bite, we're real easy to work with, and it, it's understandable that people get afraid. They get a stack of mail from our office, and the government's coming for them, and I can understand what the apprehension is. But what we need to do, and why I wanted to come out here personally, is just that we got to break through that right now, because that, that is less important than saving the property from foreclosure. And there are some really helpful tools that are available. I mentioned the payment plans that we do. People are really good at those payment plans, because we work them out based on their budget, and we just, we look at the numbers, and we say, hey, this is what we think you can afford, this is allow you, gonna, this is going to allow you to get out of a cycle of delinquency, because that doesn't help anybody. And then if they're not being good stewards of the property, you know, we want to look at that too, and just make sure people are working in the best interests of their property, their community, and the county. Now, there's a program that's available called Step Forward Michigan, and the Step Forward Michigan program will provide up to $30,000 to pay for somebody's delinquent taxes, or if they've fallen behind on their mortgage. And so you could have somebody out there in, in Lake Orion who, you know, maybe they lost a job, maybe the job that they replaced their old job with is only paying a half of what the first one paid, maybe their husband or wife passed away, they've had some hardship. They got to have a hardship, they have to own the property, so they have to be the title owner. So if they inherited it from, inherited it from mom and never got it in their title, that's going to be a problem, but if they did that, then they can get up to $30,000. We've had over 1,000 Oakland County families that have gotten funding through this. Our office has counselors that are available that can help them go through the application. The online application is a bunch of pages and, but it's an incredible resource. Without getting into the kind of the rationale behind the program, it's there. And if somebody's going to get the money, I would rather it be our Lake Orion and Oakland County families that get our share. And so that's the most important thing that I wanted to convey tonight. And so I'm doing home visits across the whole county and be doing a few in, in Lake Orion, and just, just reach out. And if it's somebody at church, or you know, somebody in the neighborhood, I'd encourage friends and neighbors to go ahead and just, you know, knock on the door as I will, and, and say, hey, you know, let's, let's just make sure that, that you know what's going on and that there's help available. So if anything, you remember, that's the one that I urge you to talk, talk about with the constituents, and it's April 1st. So that deadline is just, just around the corner. Now, just a couple other quick things that I wanted to mention. One of them is that we're very honored to partner with the township with our local government investment pool, and that's a tool that was in place before I ever became county treasurer, but it's a way that if, if the township has got some funds that they don't have an immediate need for, they can invest it with the county for a period of time, and because we're investing in really big chunks, we are able to get good interest rates and then share that with the township. It's just a tool in the tool belt, you know, if you use it or don't use it, it's really more a question of what your cash flow allows. But I did want to say that we so far have partnered with Lake Orion to earn, you guys have earned $70,225.48 in interest so far, and you know, that's a, that's a decent amount of money, you know? I mean, that could cover a big chunk of an annual salary probably and whatnot, and so that tool continues to be available. The third and final thing I wanted to mention was that for the last eight years, my office has been doing a financial literacy-themed art contest. And the idea was to get the kids in high school doing artwork that incorporates a financial literacy theme, and the, the goal was to try to have a broader conversation about financial literacy. And you know, when I go and talk to the kids, I say, listen, if my kids were, if my parents were fighting when I was young, nine times out of 10, it was a fight about money, you know? And, and the kids nod, and you know, they've had the same experience. And so the goal is to try to just equip our kids with the basics of financial literacy. So I always say, so that they can control money in their lives instead of money controlling their lives. And it, this, I want this to be a point of pride for you guys, because Lake Orion, and in particular, Ms. Wilson, your art teacher, has had a bunch of students that have participated. I think Lake Orion has gotten more money than any of the other communities countywide, and we, we've done a total of $80,000 in scholarships so far. But you've had some prominent Lake Orion winners, and I can't spill the beans right now, but April 15th, I think, is the date of our next ceremony, and we're going to have all the people that participated come out. We had some amazing submissions from Lake Orion, and like I said, I don't want to spill the beans, but I know that there's some Lake Orion artists that are going to be getting some more money, you know, for their incredible work. All of the artwork goes up on the hallway at the county treasurer's office, so every single person that comes through that office, a lot of times they're in a state of financial emergency. We're like the financial emergency room, and every one of them comes through and sees the artwork on the wall that the kids have done. And I'll tell you that they stop, and they, you know, they're looking at the want versus need, you know, opportunity costs, like these kind of basic concepts, and I'll tell you that it stimulates a conversation, I think, in their head, and hopefully in our broader community, about kind of, you know, financial empowerment, for lack of a better term. So if you're in the treasurer's office, check out the artwork on the hall, on the wall right now. If you care to visit our website at oakgov.com/treasurer, we have all of the art pieces in an online art gallery, and Ms. Wilson can certainly share, we could share, the winners over the last years from Lake Orion, but you guys will be so proud of your students and the brilliance of the, the lessons that they teach, and frankly, the quality of some of the artists. You have some amazingly talented artists, young artists in this community. I know a number of them who have made careers in the arts since being in our contest, and that wasn't why they did, they were already very talented. We just gave them $1,000, you know, for the first place winners, $750 for the second place, and $500 for the third place, and we do that same setup for ninth through 12th grade. So the ninth grader can win the same $1,000 bucks that the 12th grader can win, and then they just put it towards the college fund or vocational school, or, you know, or art school, depending, and so, so that's it. So I appreciate your indulgence and the opportunity to speak with you. We value our partnership a great deal, and I, if it's okay, have got some brochures about the property tax foreclosure process, some of the resources that are available, as well as my card with that, that 421 Andy cellphone. That's my cellphone, 248-421-ANDY, 2639, and anybody can contact me directly on that. You know, especially if somebody's out there and they know they've got a neighbor they're worried about, I'll really answer, it's really my phone, and we got a partner to prevent foreclosure, because one of them is too many. We are at a 10-year low in tax foreclosures for Oakland County, but, and you guys have, have just had some of them, but one's too many, and again, I appreciate the opportunity and appreciate your leadership.
Thank you.
Go ahead, sir.
On the pending foreclosures, you said that April 1st is the roll date for the ones that are in the, in the process?
Yeah.
Is there a way, I assume privacy is a big deal, but that the village council could learn or gain access to a list of homes in the village that are coming up on that date and are at risk?
Yes.
And we could possibly intervene if we knew the person, or?
Yes. Yep, we'll email that list over to you tomorrow.
Okay.
And, and yeah, that's exactly the type of partnership that we need, and, yeah, we'll send it over tomorrow.
We have no idea about that.
Yeah, because...
Someone I knew, like you said, went to church this summer, related, or?
Yeah.
Didn't know they were in that situation, now I'm behind that.
And what's, what's tricky about it is that, you know, when they don't pay at the township level, then the township turns it over to the treasurer's office, but that's almost a three-year process. So you knew what it was when you sent it over, but you wouldn't know, you know, whether or not they had paid, or if they were, you know, at the end of the process. So that's a great idea, and I appreciate the suggestion.
Thank you.
Yeah, absolutely.
And sir, this is the 2016 uncollected.
Yes, so this is a, this is a little bit hard to kind of get, wrap my mind around, but thank you for that. So it's a three-year process. So right now in 2019, we are foreclosing on property taxes from the 2016 tax year and prior. So that, that's a little tricky, right?
Right.
And so if anybody has 2016 delinquent taxes or prior, they're the ones that we're most concerned about.
Right.
They're the ones that we want to connect with right now. Now, if there's somebody that's got 2017, we want to talk to them too, because they're going to be right in this, at the edge of the cliff a year from now. And then if they're, you know, 2018s, then they'll just be in the first year of the, the delinquency process. But there's interest in fees, and so the sooner that we can connect with them, the better. And you know, sometimes there's easy fixes. We bump into people that haven't claimed their principal residence exemption. They're entitled to it, they've been living there, they can prove it, they've got all the documentation to show it, but they just didn't have the wherewithal to claim it. They can claim it, and there's a three-year lookback on that. And so we've had people that we've connected with, our volunteer accountants, that have been in that situation, they came to the office owing us $3,000, and then actually came out a little bit ahead, because they got a three-year lookback on their principal residence exemption, and it cleared up the cash flow problem that they were having. And so we try to approach it from the spirit of partnership and, and just of kind of equal partners. It's a scary time for folks if they're in that situation.
And you said it once earlier, the website, if people want to go get more information again?
Yep, the website is the www.oakgov, that's O-A-K-G-O-V dot com, backsplash treasurer. And then the, the office number is 248-858-0611, and they can call that number and get an appointment to meet one-on-one behind closed doors in a discreet setting. This is a one-on-one thing. People don't have to worry about anything. Then they can get scheduled right now for a, what we call a taxpayer assistance meeting, where we just sit down and just talk as people about, hey, this is what's going on, you know, here's how we can kind of get a game plan together.
Right.
But oakgov.com/treasurer, 248-858-0611, and they really can contact me anytime, you know, on my mobile.
Sure. Thank you for coming, Mr. Meisner.
Oh, thank you.
You know, this is the first time we've had somebody from the county come to us about foreclosures, and I applaud.
Well, it's a, it's a pleasure, and it's in our mutual interest.
Absolutely.
You know, we keep these folks in their home, it helps prevent that neighborhood from becoming destabilized. You know, as a treasurer, I'm obviously mindful of the impact on the tax base, but you know, more than anything, it's, I think it's a moral imperative, and for us to be able to sleep, we got to know that we did everything we can possibly do to prevent them, and so, no, it's an honor. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Good night, thanks.
Good night.
Okay.
Mr. President.
Mr. Young.
The village does invest our funds with the local government investment pool from Oakland County. We've got approximately $3 million there, and they do pay higher rates than what we can get in most cases elsewhere. Plus, they're currently changing, whereas if you go for a CD, you can lock it in for a year. Well, interest rates could be going up all during that time, and you're losing out. So we've been using his, their funds, and as he said, that's $70,000 over a number of years we've been using it, so, but more so now.
I recall when we first invested, it served us well.
And at this time, I'm only aware of one delinquent property that we've been notified of, so far. But there, I'll go see what your list shows.
All right. Thank you. All right, moving on, back to regular agenda items, item three. Ordinance number 22.05, general regulations 94.29 fireworks, second reading and adoption. Mr. Young.
Yes, council, this is ordinance, as was mentioned earlier, for the public hearing that will bring our ordinance in line with the new state law regarding fireworks, where it limits the number of event days to five days, and again, limiting the amount, well, it is 1:00 on New Year's Eve, sorry, but 11:45 on the other days, as noted in the report, and so this evening is to motion to be to accept for second reading and adoption of ordinance number 22.05.
So we're looking for an acceptance for the second reading?
I move the ordinance number 22.05, an ordinance to amend the Village of Lake Orion Code of Ordinances, Article 9, General Regulations, Chapter 94, Fire Department, Section 9429, fireworks, to comply with current state law, is hereby accepted for second reading and adopted, and shall become effective upon publication of a synopsis of said ordinance in the Lake Orion Review pursuant to the Charter of the Village of Lake Orion.
Mr. Young, you said something about a reduction of how many days?
It was 12 initially, now it's down to five.
Okay.
It was all the federal holidays, which they were 12.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Now we're down to five.
Yeah, this is an improvement over what was there, though, so. Okay, how does the favor, president, give?
Aye.
Abstained. Thank you very much. Item four, proposed zoning ordinance amendment 26.97, to amend Article 15, Site Development Standards, Section 15.04, Walls and Fences, first reading. Mr. Young.
Yes, council, before you have amendments to our zoning, our ordinance regarding fences and walls, where we're trying to streamline it and make it more adaptable to our situation, because currently the ordinance requires a staked survey, even if you're only putting in a privacy fence, an eight-foot fence, you've got to get it staked survey, which could cost more than the fence. So we've allowed for an option that you can, with the own, the adjacent, the property owner signing off, just use your regular mortgage survey and not have it staked and not pay for that. So this gives an option with... and not have it staked, and not pay for that. So this gives an option, with certain provisions, you're getting to sign off, and notary, and it's got to be officially documented, documented. And it's been recommended to the council by the Planning Commission, and we're looking to schedule for second reading and adoption on April 8th. The Planning Commission had a public hearing on this matter on February 4th. So if you have any questions.
You don't need a motion as to the language, or anything?
Yes, there's a motion on page 186.
Just the one at the bottom of the page.
I recommend a motion, the ordinance 2697, an ordinance to amend the zoning ordinance.
I would recommend that ordinance 26.97 be approved as the then. Some discussion. Huddles and favor?
Aye.
Close. And you need another motion too, sir, for public hearing?
No.
Okay. Okay. We'll go back to call them public for non-agenda items.
Is that me?
If you want to say something.
Oh, I don't want to say anything necessarily. I turned in my application, so if anybody has any questions.
And Mary, you just actually approved your application for the BZA.
Oh, good.
So you see that.
Mary's a longtime resident here of the community, recently moved into the village, built a brand-new home, and is jumping in with both feet, but you've already, you've contributed a lot in this community already. So it's just another welcome.
Thank you.
And appreciate what you do.
All right. Thank you very much.
Just need to be sworn in by the clerk at some point before the meeting.
I'll come back to. Okay. Get sworn in, there'll be some materials, and meeting schedules, and those kinds of things. Okay, great. Thank you. All right. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
At this time, we don't have a BZA schedule for sure.
Not till April.
And that's subject to if there's a business item, so.
We'll move on to council comments. Mr. Matheson, sir.
Okay, nothing tonight, thank you.
Mr. Churchill?
Uh, thank you.
Mr. Rott?
Nothing, thank you.
Mr. Hammond?
I just appreciate the county treasurer coming in, and the fact that his name is Meiser is so encouraging as treasurer, and.
I guess the whole property tax thing is very encouraging, that, that seniors or disabled, or someone that might not be as forthcoming with getting help, has a, someone like that gentleman, it's very encouraging. So I'm surprised that there are any delinquent, but if it's only one or two, that's good. But I think it's something that the council should take seriously as a, as a neighbor, and friend, and I really appreciate that gentleman coming in and putting that information in front of us to do something about it.
I agree. And to have solutions, like money's available.
Yeah. I had no idea.
Yeah.
It makes me want to not pay my taxes.
Is that it, sir?
Yes, thank you.
Mr. Randall?
What's the status on the council chamber here, Peyton and stuff?
The contractor had to renew his lead paint license, so he's in the process of getting that updated.
Is that it, sir?
All right.
And I would like to just say that, again, with, we have one BZA position that was filled, we have one vacancy left, and look forward to anybody that has an interest in that board. And so I have a general question. We're, I read something about a cross connection that we've got coming up.
I'm sorry?
A cross connection with the township. Are you familiar with it?
We're looking at, the township has their own, they're starting their own cross connection program, running out of three, we're getting information on it.
So they have some, a license that can do it?
That's the information we're getting, yes. They've, they've adopted, planning they're gonna do one-third of the township over the next three years is their goal. We just got information about it. We don't have a documentation yet, but we're gonna follow up and get that back to council.
Okay. There's a joint effort, or joint venture that we're going to do?
Well, we're gonna ask them to have, consider us in the program for council to consider.
I don't think it's been done for, since I retired, so it's for commercials. It's supposed to be done at least every five years.
Right.
And we're in default. Bob Turner was the last contractor. He wasn't licensed. He got, I believe it was DeLong Plumbing, that actually did the testing. And that's basically between the business and the plumber to pay for those fees, and he writes the report, so it's pretty basic.
Those are now done annually, by state law now. They are done annually. The reports on the test, they have to be done commercially, or in residential, annually, on an annual basis. And it's been for about at least the last five years.
Oh, okay. Well, I've been retired until 14, so. But yeah, we've been in default. They'll send a report in, but the village hasn't done any cross connection inspections.
Okay.
Right?
Right. Not, other than when they put in new installations. And that's inspected by the plumber at that time, obviously.
Okay. We're on it. More to come.
And they add annual inspection, I think that's dependent on the type and nature of the cross connection. Like an industrial one, it does have to be done. Commercial, I mean, but not like for restaurants and things like that.
One year. It doesn't matter.
Mr. Young, that's it for me. What about you, sir?
I'm sorry?
Do you have anything you'd like to add?
I did, I want to, real quick, just in the report I emailed to you, you do have a final M24, M dot design construction, reconstruction M24 coming up on March 22nd. So we'll be looking to finalize that, and confirm, and keep our pedestrian crossing, and widening the sidewalks on the bridge, and dealing with the Indianwood intersection. The water main project, the frost laws went on effect today, so hopefully in the next few weeks, they'll be lifted, so they can start working. And we did today, finally get our waste finding sign permit from M dot, so we can now go ahead and start installing the last three signs that are all on M24. And also, this, next week, we're starting our Water Towns program. If you remember, our Clinton River Watershed Council, they came last year, and we adopted resolution. Well, they're gonna be meeting next Wednesday to start the kickoff of that program. So we're excited about that, and what the benefits that we can have from that evaluation by an outside firm, the group from Lawrence Tech. I did want to just touch real quickly, too. We have a letter going out on our parking enforcement and parking lot uses for employees and residents that wanted to make council be aware, because we will be wanting council to endorse this. And if you have any questions or concerns, this is being, been put together by the Parking Study Committee, and it's pretty straightforward. And meanwhile, we're pursuing additional shared parking spaces to accommodate the employees and residents. So if you have any questions on those, let me know, let me know. And the other thing I just want to mention on the Parks and Rec Committee, we had, again, I sent a highlight to the minutes of actions that are in place, and we were hoping to have on the agenda tonight, the nonprofit status and then having an event on the fireworks. So we didn't get that information until today, but we'll have it on the next meeting, looking at the committee doing that activity, and changes to the ordinance regarding Greens Park, changing that to a resolution, not an ordinance change, so the council can more easily make changes, because the board, advisory board, Parks and Rec, was gonna be recommending we have kayak and paddleboard running during the day, which is when the peak time would be, and have it limited. They already, the contractor said he would keep them along the shoreline, and designated, so they're very visible. So, and he's got some good ideas and some programs to get the community involved, and children, and older people. And we're also gonna be recommending, the committee recommended that the admission to Greens Park be $1 per person, as opposed to last year, $1 per family. But we'll be talking about that more at a budget meeting this coming Thursday. So I just wanted to touch base with them. Have any questions or need information, before then let me know. And I don't know if Tracy will add anything to that.
I think you covered it.
No. That's all I have. Sorry.
Okay. Next thing on the, is to move to adjourn?
So move.
Support.
Huddles and favor, please, it is aye.
Aye.
Aye. Close means adjourn. Thank you very much.